Good evening, and welcome to the December 8th, 2014 meeting of the Florissant City Council. Item number one on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join the council in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Paul, would you come forward and lead the council on the Pledge of Allegiance? Right there. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start...
Just a second, Mr. President. You know, we used to have a thing called decorum and a dress code here at City Hall, and all I have to say is live in Florissant. It's crazy sweater night.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before we begin, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak at the hearing from citizens portion of the meeting, I would ask that you complete a speaker's card located on the table at the entrance to the chambers. If you'll then hand that to Mr. Hessel. He'll forward it to us. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Shildroff, Hanky, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Let their record reflect a quorum has been met. Item number three, approval of the minutes. Ms. Pagano moves for approval of the meeting minutes of December 1st, 2014. That is seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All in favor? Aye. I apologize, and Mr. Hanky would move for approval of the minutes of the meeting of December 1st, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Item number four, proclamation. Your Honor?
Whereas the scouting movement was established in February 1910, throughout these 97 years, the Boy Scouts of America have instilled devotion to God and country in the young men of our nation. And whereas the ranks of scouting have offered the young men of America the opportunity to learn and demonstrate the qualities of leadership. Whereas Paul Feldman began his scouting career in 2001 at Russell Elementary. Whereas for Paul's Eagle Scout project, he recruited and organized his fellow scouts and friends to construct a stone border around the St. Ferdinand Church electronic sign on Charbonneir Road in Florissant, Missouri. In addition, Paul designed and organized plantings around the sign inside of the stone border. Whereas Paul was proud to beautify his neighborhood parish grounds even though he is not a member of the parish. Paul has had the opportunity to participate in athletic association of this parish as a team player. In addition, he has volunteered countless hours with a charity basketball tournament for the past four. Whereas this project could never have been accomplished without the assistance and generosity of many organizations within the parish, as well as Land Works Incorporated, Walbart and Sons Nursery, this project was completed in June of 2012. Whereas on November 29th, 2014, Paul Feldman was presented with his Eagle Scout badge and his Eagle Court of Honor. At this event, Eagle Scout Four Winds ceremonial team led the ceremony along with Dr. Kevin McLean as the master of ceremonies, Mr. Chuck Woods as the Eagle presented, and Reverend Dr. Mark P. Bangert, Paul's grandfather, was the officiant. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Schneider, Mayor of the City of Florissant, Missouri, do hereby recognize and congratulate Paul Feldman on this outstanding achievement and urge all of the youth of the City of Florissant to undertake and achieve similar goals.
I just wanted to express my congratulations to Paul and the entire family, family in the area of Brick County, in North County area, they sort of maybe now kind of Paul, but his entire family, in the bottom of their service, and he calls all their brothers also Eagle Scouts, so he carries on the family.
There's a lot of Boy Scouts and Child Scouts that have been very few actually received the way of Eagle Scouts, a lot of hard work and dedication. It takes the right kind of spirit. It'll tell the entire world that you've accomplished something that you can stick to a task and see it through to its completion. If you choose a career in military or business or whatever, this honor will serve you well. Congratulations. Tell us about your Eagle project.
My project was done around St. Ferdinand Church, their electric sign. I did some brickwork around there and also some landscaping. But I couldn't have done this without the help from my fellow scouts and people in the community.
Yes? You got the baby. You can go whenever you want. Mary Burke, Mary Burke. Come on up, ma'am. If you would say your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate it. And speak right into the microphone, please, Ms. Burke.
Good evening, Mayor Schneider, and good evening, city council members. My name is Mary Burke from Ward Two, and I live at 1305 Lindsay Lane in Florissant, Missouri. I travel back and forth from work on Florissant Road. My question is, why is the view of Bangert Park, the Bangert Park Pool, and the Florissant Valley Library blocked by numerous Wright Tree Service trucks? Are these City of Florissant trucks, and if so, couldn't they be parked somewhere that would not eliminate the view of one of Florissant's beautiful parks? Or are they private trucks, and if so, why are they parked in one of our parks?
Ma'am, I failed to mention that this is not a question and answer session. If you want an answer from myself or one of the other councilsmen or the mayor, see us after the meeting, and we'll address you directly.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mark Wessel. Sir, if you'd be so kind as to state your name and address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
I'm Mark Wessel with Springfield Sign &amp; Neon. I'm here to address the ordinance amending for Culvers, and I don't know that it shouldn't be...
No, that would come up during the public hearing, sir. So when I ask for comments during the public hearing aspect of this, then you may come up at that point in time?
Yes.
Okay. So if you'll sit back down, we'll get you just a few minutes. Thank you. State Representative Keith English. You ready? Mr. English, if you'd state your name and address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
Very much. My name is Keith English, 755 Pelican Lane, State Representative of the 68th District. With me today, I have a very special guest. Her first council meeting, Nora Elizabeth, my granddaughter. This year has been a very exciting year for me and my family, as we've been blessed with Nora and a beautiful fiance. We're scheduled to get married in the spring of next year. But what I came here today to talk about, I'll grab my notes out of my pocket here, is to talk about some of the things happening in Jefferson City. As you know, on December 2nd, we had pre-filing of some legislation. The first bills that were filed will cut the middle class with right to work, paycheck deception, and the evil teacher tenure bill has been filed with a supermajority in the House of Republicans and Democrats, 117 Republicans. We're going to need everyone that is against those three things that I mentioned to contact not only myself, but anyone that they know in the legislature to let them know that those things are going to hurt the middle class. But with that being a partisan issue, one of the things that we need to discuss that is nonpartisan is the redistribution of the sales tax that was brought up last year. I know Speaker Deo is carrying that bill, which means it will move very fast. And what that'll do is it'll cut the tax distribution that the City of Florissant gets by almost a half a million dollars. I know the lobbyist that you have hired is working with legislators on the other side of the aisle, and I'll be working as well to make sure that that doesn't pass. What happened was with the closure of the Chrysler dealers, the Chrysler manufacturer out in Fenton, and of course, the one in Hazelwood, now they're screaming because they have no tax dollars to pay for things that are important, such as their fire districts, as far as their school districts. So they're wanting a part of that distribution tax. That will cut us so deeply here in your budget that it's unalarming. So I'll be working, of course, with the mayor, with the municipal league, and of course, with those on my side of the aisle to try to make sure that it doesn't pass again this year. With that being said, we need somebody in Jefferson City that's very energetic, like I said I would be when I ran two years ago. I would like to thank those that have elected me to run for another two-year term, and I wish to stay in Jefferson City to represent the 68th District, the City of Florissant. There was some discussion about me running for mayor, although I'm very enthused and energetic and very honored for most of those that have asked me to run. Right now, it's not my time. As my campaign manager says, and all you know who he is, I don't have the whiskers yet. So with that being said, I welcome your input on everything that's going to be happening. Filing has just started this past week, and on January the 7th, we'll be hitting the ground running. Thank you very much for your time, and if you have any questions or any concerns, I'm sure I'll be hearing from the mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. English. Next item on the agenda, communication. Clerk, we have no communication. Next item on the agenda, public hearing. Public Hearing 14-12-032.
A public hearing will be held by the Florissant City Council in the council chambers at 9:55 Route St. Francois in Florissant, Missouri on Monday, December 8th, 2014 at 7:30 p.m. on the following proposition. To rezone for New Halls Ferry Real Estate LLC, the property located at 15275 and 15267 New Halls Ferry Road from B4, single-family district to a B5 planned commercial district to allow for a sit-down carryout restaurant. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
I believe the petitioner is present this evening. Good evening, welcome. If you'd state your name and address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Kurt Daniels with Cochran Engineering. I put it out of the way so I don't step on it. But I appreciate your time tonight, and along with me tonight is Tom Pollock, the agent of record, and we're representing New Halls Ferry LLC, the Emos Kerry Corbett for this site. What we're requesting tonight is a rezoning of a five-acre tract from B4, single-family, to B5 planned commercial district. I think most of you probably know where this is. It's a triangle off of southwest of New Halls Ferry. It is the old bath and pool house. But what we're here tonight in public hearing is to request a favorable recommendation. I think it's the January 8th meeting for this rezoning, November...
False.
12th, sorry. The January 12th meeting, 2015. It's hard to believe we're already there. But with that, the reason we'd be asking for the rezoning is to bring in an Emos Pizza. It's a 2,500 square foot building. It is a dine-in and carryout restaurant, which would be on, I guess we could call that the northeastern corner of this site. And with that, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Mr. Caputo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, welcome tonight, sir. Do you have any plans of adding at all to this land, another structure or expand it?
Another structure to this land? There is some talk about additional structures, but at this time, there's no commitment. There's no, I guess, I can't say letter of intent or anything that is forthcoming.
So as of right now, you're just, the Emos is, and that's it right now?
Is what we're asking for the rezoning for. But it is the overall site is what we're asking for the zoning. And we met with city staff and discussed with them what we should request, and it complies with what we need, and we followed their request.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Yes, I grew up swimming in that pool since I was a young man. I grew up in Wedgewitt. So that was Wedgewitt Pool and Bath House is what it was.
I couldn't remember the Wedgewitt.
No, that's okay. I just want to know what your hours are going to be, and are we going to be open seven days a week? There is some houses that kind of back up to that property?
On the north, northern side. And we do have a six-foot vinyl fence with landscaping, 15-foot landscape buffer in that area. Normal hours of operation, I would say, would probably be 10 a.m. to probably 10 p.m. would be typical, and seven days a week is what their hours of operation would be.
Have you guys reached out to any of those neighbors yet and talked to any of them?
We have not. We have not reached out to them. We haven't heard anything negative or anything positive. We haven't. It's all been pretty quiet. So one thing is with the development of this, there isn't a road that would extend into this property or shows that it could be. And this would alleviate any traffic from entering their subdivision. So from that standpoint, I guess as someone who lives in a house, I would welcome that.
Sure. What about your entrance is going to be the same as the old one?
That's a projection right now. Yes, we can enter upon the same entrance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. This preliminary development plan you're showing us, so is Lot 1, which is where the Emos building is going to go. And then you have Lot 2, basically the rest of that triangular lot has vacant property presently. Under a B5, can we really rezone Lot 2 as a B5 with no development on it, Mr. Hessel? Or is the B5, what they're asking for is only going to be on Lot 1?
Right. But you could rezone the entire lot to B5. And when Lot 2 becomes developed, then you'd come back and ask for an amendment.
Amendment, okay.
It's sort of, I know it's a little reversed, Mark.
Right.
We've done it where we've had out parcels, where the majority of the lot is being developed, and then you have an out parcel for a smaller one. This is sort of the flip of that, but that doesn't mean that the B5 couldn't be utilized for.
Okay. Yeah. You're right. I wasn't thinking about the out parcels, but we have done those before. Yeah, and you're right, this is just the reverse of that.
Typically, you develop the three acres, and then the .8 acres would be developed later. But doesn't mean it has to be done this way.
Right.
So yeah, B5 works.
Okay. And also, your original plan that we got, preliminary development plan, showed the building as a 9,500 square foot. Was that a mistake, or was it originally where there was going to be something else on this other side of the building, or that just was not?
They probably got a fat finger that day, and if we didn't catch it, that's my fault. I apologize, but it's 2,500 square foot, and time was lost.
So this building is only going to be in Emos. There's nothing else going to be in this building. This is just a standalone Emos.
Standalone Emos, and can we have a little bit of rendering? It'll be brick and other material that meets the City of Florissant.
So if you're going to do another strip certain or other buildings, they'll be on the other side of the lot. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez.
How you doing? Just wanted, my understanding is, once you develop the building here, everything else would be cleared out? The tennis courts that are down on the left side, and the building that's kind of caved in? All of them will be cleaned out?
Absolutely. We'll renovate the side. What we do, we do an installation on all that, on the buildings, the pool and all that. Have a clean, nice, new looking site.
Okay. So I was just curious about that. The Emos across the street on Vale, they're in that plaza, would that switch to this location?
Yes.
Okay. Super.
They are the purchaser.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's where I go, so I wasn't sure.
They want their candle on, and they're making a little more of a push to do that. So this was the site they found desirable, and they're excited about it.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
Just one quick question. I was by there earlier today, and I'm very excited to see it raised and a new building put up there. Will there be a drive-through at all in this project?
There will be. Right now, there's a proposed drive-through on the northern side of that. There is some talk that we might change the drive around a little bit of where it is. Actually, a lot of Emos business, it's kind of Greek to me, but it's off of texting. That's how they get their drive. If they text their order in, they swing in, pick it up, and move on. So yes, there would be a drive-through, and generally, it's texting. It's pickup.
Pickup, okay. Mr. Caputo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I'd just like to make a final comment. I know it's nice, there ain't too many Emos that are sit-down. I grew up on the hill. I knew the Emo family very well, and there's only very few of them that are sit-down. So it's going to be great to have a sit-down Emos around. And I'm welcome to Florissant, and welcome to the ward.
Their salad bars are great.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, I just have a follow-up question on this drive-through. Now, that's not shown on your present plans.
It is. The pickup is...
Okay, well, that's what I was going to say. The drive-through's not shown. It's showing something about a customer pickup, which, that's what I was going to say. It makes a distinction if this is going to be a pickup window only as opposed to a drive-through, because we had this on another building, and we had to specifically say this is a pickup window only, not a drive-through where they would come through, order. So it's a pickup window only. Okay.
Mayor Schneider.
Yeah, this is a project. I appreciate you guys, your due diligence, working with our economic development director, Bob Russell. This wasn't the easiest parcel for us to find a developer for. We have only one other that is harder, Mr. Schmidt's well aware of that, and we're still trying to get the right combination for that project. So we really appreciate your investment in our city. It's been a good year, ladies and gentlemen. You know, we got a Walmart under construction with no Tiff. We got Bright Walks coming out of the ground. We got Culvers going to open up pretty soon. We've got the second CVS coming to Florissant, Sweetie Pie's, Jimmy John's. And you know, I was talking, this is a hard council to please, because I was talking to them over the weekend about all the great things that were happening. And then one of them says, well, when are we going to get that Chick-fil-A? But just be patient, Mr. Shildroff, it's coming.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, Ms. Pagano moves to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Public Hearing Number 14-12-033.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 405135 of the Florissant City Code. The zoning ordinance as amended, a public hearing will be held by the city council of the City of Florissant, St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Route St. Francois on Monday, December 8th, 2014 at 7:30 p.m. on the following proposition. To issue an amendment to B5 ordinance number 8058 to allow for the addition of a digital sign to an approved monument sign for the property located at 955 North Highway 67. Citizens will have, and parties of interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Mr. Wessel. Sir, if you'd be so kind as to state your name and address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
I'm Mark Wessel with Springfield Sign &amp; Neon from Springfield, Missouri, and I'm up here to discuss a change or the amendment to the B5 ordinance, 8058, that we're requesting.
And you have the floor, sir. If you're talking to the mic, I'd appreciate it.
The site is currently approved with two signs. One is a 30-foot pylon sign with a digital reader board. The other location is a smaller monument sign. It's about eight foot overall height, significantly smaller than the pylon sign that's approved. We're looking to put a digital reader board also on that sign. It just got neglected as we came through with the process, so we're trying to clean that up. The sign is modest compared to the pylon sign. We have been through the P&amp;Z process to discuss this previously and have come up with a couple of issues to make sure that we do. One is to display the same message on both reader boards, and to the best of the hardware's capability, sync those such that they switch at the same time with the same message. I'm here to answer any questions. I do have an image of that, if you guys don't have one.
If you'd like to put that up, that'd be fine.
There you go.
Mr. Caputo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Wessel, is the culture block that's on the base of that, is that the same design that's on the building itself?
Yes, sir. It's the same stone, and laid the same way, put up by the same mason.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. I guess I'm just a little confused. We're doing both signs with digital or only the monument sign?
Both signs. The pylon sign has been previously approved and has no issues. The sign on the top...
Right. That's the existing sign that's going to be in the one down below. You'll not let the digital be about 18 inches higher and...
Yes, sir. We're taking a little bit out of the stone, so we don't go on up too much in height.
So the pylon sign will basically have the same digital board as the monument sign?
It's bigger. They're the same function, look, color, all that's identical. This is a little smaller sign than the pylon sign.
And you're going to run the both digital signs consecutively, so they'll both show the same thing at the same time, if I understand that correctly?
Yes, and I believe the ordinances have a frame hold time, so we...
About 10 seconds. There's still, P&amp;Z is still refining our sign to catch up with technology, but yeah, we're a little slow behind the times on the electronic signs, but we're catching on fast. I guess the only other thing is we, as well as all our digital signs in the city, none of them, we have allowed video streaming, so no moving pictures or moving screens, and then a 10-second flash on the lettering and so...
Yes, no movement.
Right, video streaming, what they call it, yeah. I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment?
If I may add one more?
Yes, sir. Right ahead.
We are under a really tough time deadline, and we are trying to get this settled, so to speak, as you guys see fit and vote accordingly. So we're just trying to make sure we get it as quickly as we can, and I think we're looking to Mr. Hanky for maybe a request of a triple reading to try and get that through this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hernandez moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Next item on the agenda, old business, second readings. Mr. Shildroff moves for a second reading of 9054, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill, ma'am.
Ordinance amending the floodplain management ordinance.
Mr. Schmidt moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill.
Ordinance amending the floodplain management ordinance.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, Clerk, please poll the council.
Shildroff, Hanky, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Bill ninety fifty-four passes and becomes ordinance eighty-one oh one, eight one zero one. Next item on the agenda, new business, bills for first reading. Bill ninety fifty-six.
Ordinance to rezone for Missouri CVS Pharmacy LLC, the property located at six ninety-six and six ninety-eight North Highway sixty-seven, from B three extensive commercial district to B five planned commercial district to allow for the operation of a twenty-four-hour drive-through pharmacy, retail, liquor sales, and medical clinic.
Bill ninety fifty-seven.
Ordinance authorizing an amendment to B five ordinance number eighty fifty-eight issued to S and H Foods DBA Culvers to allow for the addition of a digital sign to an approved monument sign for the property located at nine fifty-five North Highway sixty-seven.
Mr. Hanky moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing amendment to B five ordinance number eighty fifty-eight issued to S and H Foods DBA Culvers to allow for the addition of a digital sign to the approved monument sign for the property located at nine fifty-five North Highway sixty-seven.
Mr. Hanky moves for a third reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? Voice vote, please.
Shildroff, Hanky, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to B five ordinance number eighty fifty-eight issued to S and H Foods DBA Culvers to allow for the addition of a digital sign to an approved monument sign for the property located at nine fifty-five North Highway sixty-seven.
Before a final vote is taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please poll the council.
Shildroff, Hanky, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Bill ninety fifty-seven passes and becomes ordinance eighty-one oh two, eight one oh two. Bill ninety fifty-eight.
Ordinance amending ordinance number eighty fifty-nine pertaining to wage range and job classification for full-time employees by adding a new job classification of civil engineer one.
Mr. Jones moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Caputo. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance amending ordinance number eighty fifty-nine pertaining to wage range and job classification for full-time employees by adding new job classification of civil engineer one.
Ms. Pagano moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Caputo. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Shildroff, Hanky, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Please read the bill a third time.
Ordinance amending ordinance number eighty fifty-nine pertaining to wage range and job classification for full-time employees by adding a new job classification of civil engineer one.
Before a final vote is taken on this proposed bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Shildroff, Hanky, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Bill ninety fifty-eight passes and becomes ordinance eighty-one oh three, eight one oh three. Bill ninety fifty-nine.
Ordinance amending chapter one twenty, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Article seven, Youth Advisory Commission, Section one twenty-three forty, membership appointment terms by reducing required age for young members of the commission.
Mr. Hanky moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? I would like to make an amendment to this, to this bill, and I would like to change the ages from eleven to thirteen and from twenty to seventeen. That has been recommended by staff. Seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Now, we will conduct the vote for the second reading? Okay. All in favor of a second reading on the amended bill? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance amending chapter one twenty, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Article seven, Youth Advisory Commission, Section one twenty-three forty, membership appointment terms by reducing the required age for young members of the commission.
Mr. Lee makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by myself. Any discussion? Your honor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to explain, also to advertise for the Youth Advisory Commission. It's a tremendous commission that we've had for a long time. They advise the administration and the council on programs for the youth of the community. When someone has an idea that they think would be good for the youth, a lot of times it sounds like a good idea, and then after the Youth Advisory Commission reviews it, they amend it or enhance it, or sometimes occasionally they might reject it. But at least we're hearing from the youth of the community before we act. They're very helpful with events like Project Liftoff and the fishing tournament and a lot of other things like that, the Halloween party and the splish splash and the ice skating party in the spring. We had a employee idea program recently at, in the Employee Appreciation Luncheon. One of the ideas that we received an award was this one, but the details of the recommendation were slightly different from what the administration wanted to do. We wanted to go from age fourteen to thirteen so that we can include everybody. As soon as they become a teenager, they know they can be on the Youth Advisory Commission. Very easy. If you're a teenager and you're not an adult, you could be on the Youth Advisory Commission. The older, age seventeen, we do have occasionally a member stay on the committee until age seventeen. They sort of take a leadership role, so we didn't want to ace them out by changing it to just sixteen. Right now, it's a twenty, which is too old. When you become eighteen, you're actually considered an adult anyway. So if they continue on the Youth Advisory Commission after age eighteen, they would be considered, we'd have to reappoint them as an adult member. And then we just felt like the recommendation that you saw before, that eleven and twelve-year-olds just maybe might be just a little bit too young, and we'd like to see how it goes with the thirteen-year-olds before we would make it any younger. But anyway, that gives us a larger pool of applicants for the Youth Advisory Commission. And those listening to this or reading about it in the paper, if you know of a young person that's a teenager but not an adult, we'd love to have their application to serve on the Youth Advisory Commission. Thanks.
Thank you, Your Honor. Roll call vote, please.
Shildroff, Hanky, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Prior to a final, oh, please read the bill.
Ordinance amending chapter one twenty, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Articles, Article seven, Youth Advisory Commission, Section one twenty-three forty, membership appointment terms by reducing the required age for young members of the commission.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Shildroff, Hanky, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Bill ninety fifty-nine passes and becomes ordinance eighty-one oh four, eight one oh four. Counsel announcements. Mr. Hanky.
Yeah, at this time, I would like to personally give a shout-out or a thank you to Stephen and Kara Sutterer for entrusting us with this fine collection of sweaters. Thanks, Stephen, Kara.
Thank you, Mr. Hanky. Mr. Shildroff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to congratulate Mr. Jay Russell for his recognition in Bangor Park with a monument near the tank that he had placed in our city in nineteen sixty-four. Mr. Russell is a former, longtime Missouri representative for Florissant and the owner of BJ's Bar and Restaurant in Ward Five, which is the oldest establishment in our city. Yesterday, we had a fantastic crowd at Bangor Park displaying the monument for the first time, and I would like to congratulate Mr. Russell for his many years of service to North County, to Florissant, not only as a legislator but as a business owner. Thank you.
Mr. Caputo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I got a couple of things I'd like to say. I'd like to also reiterate what Mr. Shildroff said about yesterday for Jay Russell. Very nice honor that he had. A lot of people showed up. It was a very nice, nice affair. And also, I'd like to get a shout-out to my kids at St. Louis Job Corps with the cement mason program. They poured the concrete for the monument, did all the labor work for the monument, and they did a good job, and I'm proud of my, proud of my kids at Job Corps. And also, I would, another thing I would like to say, and the notable is a lot lately, with the crimes of cars, people got to start locking your vehicles and securing your valuables in these vehicles. People are just walking up, opening the door. If the car door is open, they're going to steal stuff out of the vehicle. So make sure you lock your vehicles and secure all your valuables out of sight in your vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caputo. I would like to echo what Jeff and what Keith said about Mr. Russell. He's a stalwart in North County and in Florissant. I unfortunately had commitments yesterday and could not attend. And most importantly, tomorrow would be my wife's birthday. I'm not going to tell you how many years old she is, but I would wish my lovely wife a very, very happy birthday. Your honor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned at the ceremony yesterday, Jay Russell is a mentor to me, always has been, since I was elected to the City Council in nineteen seventy-nine. He was actually supportive of another candidate. Yet, as soon as I won, he treated me as if he had supported me, and we've been friends ever since. And we worked on stormwater programs together. He would get state money. We'd work on MSD. We would get the council to appropriate money, and we got a lot of creeks paved, not only in Ward Three but in all the wards that were eligible. At that time, some of the wards were not eligible. We also wanted to mention, we had several DARE graduations already. We had a graduation at St. Ferdinand and also at Sacred Heart last week. And then we'll be attending DARE graduations this week at McCurdy and St. Rose and Lawson, Commons Lane, Hollis Ferry, Wedgewood, and Combs. And if I didn't mention your school, that means that your school is probably, if you're in Florissant, your school is probably in the springtime. So we do half of them in the spring and half of them in the summer. Our tremendous, kudos to Officer Lesi Summers. She's a terrific DARE officer, and the kids just scream when she's introduced. They'd give the mayor and the chief polite applause, but they give Lesi a round of standing ovation. Then Saturday, we had a great time right here in this room. We had the Queen in her court, Alex Pfeiffer in her court. We're doing face painting for the children and had a lot of other volunteers. Carol Lowry, a wife of former mayor, Robert Lowry, was here, and they were helping out with the kids. We're having a great time. We had Santa Claus and some photographs and all that kind of stuff. Then we had the lighting of the lights at City Hall. They're beautiful. I'd like to thank Bob Laramie and his crew for doing such a great job with the LED lights out front. And then Alex Pfeiffer and her court helped to turn the light switch on. It was a very nice evening. The same night, we had our twenty-six Project Liftoff. Plus, they had about five hundred kids there. This is just a great time. If you're feeling down or whatever, all you got to do is go to Project Liftoff, and you're just energized by all the enthusiasm that the kids have for the swimming. I've never seen so many kids in the swim pool as this year, and we had a lot of them on the ice rink. And they're just having the whole place except for the theater, pizza and soda. They're having a great time, and we're just happy for them. We got Visit with Santa at the Sunset Park Saturday, this Saturday the thirteenth, from ten to eleven-thirty. We have Christmas tree disposal this year. Call City Hall for more information, nine two one fifty-seven hundred. We got a house decorating contest. You can enter your house if you want to, if you're putting a lot of lights on. I would enter my house, but I just got that single row on the gutters. I don't think that's going to get anywhere. But, so that's at JFK or Egan Center. You can, if you want to be judged by the Youth Advisory, another thing the Youth Advisory Commission does, they do the house, the tree light judging. And then lastly, we have a snowman building contest, too, between now and February fifteenth. So if you build a really neat snowman and take a picture of it, you can enter that in our snowman building contest. Anyway, I want to wish everybody a great holiday, peaceful Christmas season, prosperous New Year, and thanks for all, participating in all the events last year.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next meeting of the City Council will be January twelfth, two thousand fifteen, at seven thirty p.m. Mr. Schmidt moves to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Aye. The council will stand adjourned.